December, January 11th. I call the order of the Board of County Commissioners. We're meeting via the Zoom platform. Does Casey need to be sworn in, Judge Asher?
Both of us would, Jack.
Okay. So you want to do the swearing in, Judge Asher?
He's muted.
You know you're muted?
We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
We are, okay. So who's going to say the Pledge of Allegiance? Eric, you want to say it, or Casey, you want to say it?
I can't.
Casey's going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll turn it over to Judge Asher. Okay, let's have the new officers stand.
Excuse me, was the oath given? Hello?
Judge Asher.
If the oath was given, I never heard a thing of it.
We're having some issues with the reverb. So, hang on.
Wes said you can't have three computers in one room.
Okay, you tell me if you want me to turn it off. You're muted. Can you turn the volume down a little? Real quick, yeah, all the way down. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, we had major problems because we had volume up on too many. They were all muted. We had the volumes up, even though they were muted and we still had the reverb. So, yes, Judge Asher was here and did the oath. So.
I didn't hear a thing of it.
Okay, I can get him back down here to do it just for you, Eric.
Yeah, I just wanted to be legit, but due to that, there was nothing.
Okay, okay, give me just a minute and I'll go get him back.
Jack, we, can you hear me? You could still go ahead with the, with the meeting even before Eric's sworn in. The swearing in is actually a technical, a technicality. It's not actually required. He was a Commissioner at 12:01 this morning. Whether he had taken that oath or not, there's Supreme Court precedent to that effect. So while it should be done and could be done when Judge Asher gets back down, you go ahead and start the meeting if you want to.
Has everybody had a public comment? I don't see any public on here. If you want to speak, want to speak through the chat bar. Seeing nobody, seeing, not seeing anybody. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Also move?
It's been moved by Commissioner Knoll. I'm going to second it. I don't see Commissioner Quinn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, pass two to zero.
Excuse me, Commissioner Bauer. Sorry, may I interrupt? I have Judge Asher behind me. I'm going to step out of the way in just a second and be able to administer that oath.
Okay, Mr. Knoll, are you there somewhere?
Yes, I am. Sorry about that.
Can you hear? Sorry.
Yes.
Hang on, they're going to get me the oath and we'll do, we'll get you official here. All right, here we go. Aye, Eric Knoll.
Aye, Eric Knoll.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States?
That I will support the constitutional laws of the United States?
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Kansas?
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Kansas?
And faithfully discharge the duties of County Commissioner, District Two?
And faithfully discharge the duties of District Two as County Commissioner?
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, you're in.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No problem. It's Commissioner Quinn, Honored. I'm waiting for Commissioner Quinn to join us.
We're working on that, sir.
Okay, no problemo. Okay, next order of business is Commissioner comments and committee reports. I have two comments today. First of all, my hat's off. Congratulations to Commissioner Quinn. We're glad to see you join. We're looking forward to your participation. The next commission, the next comment I'd like to make is God bless America. Mr. Knoll, do you have anything?
No, nothing today. Oh, I want to welcome Casey.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, guys. I don't have anything. Did I miss a vote or anything? We're having some technical difficulties in here and I just want to make sure we didn't miss any part.
Well, you missed, we approved the minutes from the last meeting. And since you weren't a participant, it probably should have just been him and I voting on it.
Okay, perfect. I'm on here and I can hear you now.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Can you give 10 seconds to get a quick picture with the rest of them so they can leave and I can take my mask off?
Sure.
Okay, just, just one second.
Okay.
Okay, we're good, thank you.
New business before the board. Westlander Emergency Management Director. Fifth resolution extending declaration of local disaster due to COVID-19. Last night. I've had a mute class.
Apologize about that. Good afternoon, Commission. I emailed all three of you, the disaster extension, which would extend it for a 90-day period. And then, of course, if COVID would magically be over before that 90-day period, we could terminate the extension. What the disaster extension gives us is makes it to where we can get female assistance when needed and all the supplies that I'm able to order through the state for all of our emergency responders, hospitals, community health clinic, health department.
The Chair will entertain a motion to allow the Chairman to sign the resolution. Do I have a motion?
Moment.
One second.
It's a second by Commissioner Quinn. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes three to zero. Okay, organization meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to nominate the Chairperson for 2021.
I'd like to nominate Jack Bauer to be the Chairperson continuing on into 2021.
Do I have a second?
No, we normally do that in two-year increments.
Do we have a second? I'll second it for Commission for discussion purposes. Eric, you guys want to discuss it?
Yeah, why are we departing from a tradition?
I'm not aware of a tradition.
Sorry, I didn't know a tradition. I just thought moving forward to have Jack as Chair and you as Vice Chair would be a good, good move since I'm the newbie here.
Any other discussion? I assume they're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Paul, same side?
Aye.
Passes two to one. Okay. Come up, appointment of Commissioners and County Personnel of various committees for 2021.
Do I need to nominate a Vice Chair, Jack, or not?
Oh, I'm sorry, Casey, continue. Do you have a nomination for Vice Chair?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Eric Knoll for Vice Chairman for 2021.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay. The appointment of Commissioners at our county personnel to various committees. The Chamber Board has been handled in the past by J.B. Madison, HR Director. I would, she has expressed an interest to continue, so I would support her continuing that. Any comments?
I would support that.
Would too?
Okay, the, the committee assignments. I know I brought up earlier, two or three weeks ago, the idea of us mixing that up a little bit. Some people have been on some of these boards. For example, I can tell you on the Solid Waste Advisory Board with my time at the City of Atchison, I've been on that board since 2009, which is like 11 years. And I know some people have been on some of these boards for four or five years. I just think that maybe we should mix them up a little bit so that people would have a chance to understand different parts of the working of the, of the Commission. Any, any? Comments about that?
So I have a quick comment about that. I was wondering if those assignments have to be done right now in this meeting or if there'd be time for all of us to express kind of our why to one another about, to figure out who's fit might work for each committee. Because I know that, you know, I've heard from other folks interested in certain boards and I just want to kind of understand. I know myself, like, for instance, when I was campaigning, I know that the county has a, a pretty big interest in that 1% sales tax. So that includes joint communications and solid waste. So for me to better my education on those boards, you know, I would be interested in. And just kind of hearing from you guys, if you want to switch it up, why you want to be on a board before, before voting for one another, just to kind of better understand that a little bit for me.
Okay, so we should discuss it here, Casey. I think we need to decide, you know, at this meeting. And I think we need to, you know, we can take all the time, we need to discuss it. So I would be more than happy to move away from joint communications and solid waste board and give it to a Commissioner that wants to take it. And I'd like to see, I'd like to have some, I'd like to consider the County Health Board. I think that I could add to that by seeing a different set of eyes. Eric's done a great job. He's been on there for more than five years. So I'd like to, myself personally, I'd like to see that board. Other than that, I'm wide open, so.
I would like to stay on the Health Board. I think that once you're on a board and you understand the, the workings of that board, you're more highly effective than if you are suddenly thrust into an area where you don't know the subtleties of that board. And right now in the pandemic, I don't know if it's great to switch up something as, as important as the Health Board. I know that there's two outgoing Commissioners from the other counties that are leaving. So there is basically going to be all new Commissioners on there if we change. So I think, you know, in the middle of this, to have a whole new board or County Commissioner Representatives on that probably is not a good thing.
So, do we vote? Do we vote for these annually? So we could, technically, we could switch them up annually and kind of learn from each other. I mean, I don't think you should necessarily switch annually, but at the same time, change is good to get new ideas and, you know, understand different things. And as far as the, the health, the County Health Department goes, I know I'm new, but I definitely have several questions on that after kind of doing some research on why were the multi-county, what that looks like and, and, and just questions in general. So I don't necessarily have a need to serve on that board, but I would love to talk to you guys in the future about that.
Well, there's no doubt that Eric has some experience on that board. I just, I have the, the idea that maybe if you switch up things, another set of eyes sees things more clearly. Not necessarily, but, and I don't want to make this a, a, generally, this is, generally, this has been a pretty automatic thing. We just stay with where we've been, Casey.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not 100% in favor of that. I think we all should look at it and say, hold on, maybe if I switch some of these things up, I'd be a better, well-rounded Commissioner by understanding what goes on in other boards.
Okay. And then, one more last quick question. If you serve on the Health Board, that doesn't mean myself as a Commissioner doesn't have questions, concerns, and then you would just be the representative from Atchison County on that board? Is that correct?
That's correct. So you, as a Commissioner, Casey, you could discuss anything you'd like to discuss with County Schools. You can be as active that you just couldn't serve at the board. You couldn't attend the board, Eric, or, or I would be. So, yeah, this is, this is your, if you let to say I'm new anymore, you can just say I'm going to, so I'm going to do.
This is what I'm going to do, okay.
So, any more discussion? Well, what I would suggest then, if Eric isn't willing to change on those, that particular issue, and he thinks he's the best person for that board, then I would suggest that Casey take my board assignments, which is solid waste and joint communication, and I take Commissioner Bill Paul's committee assignments. And I believe the Economic Representative, the Economic Development Representative has always been the Chairman, so.
I wanted to point out, I was, that's one board that I wanted, but there are other ones that I was willing to swap if need be. So, but I'm perfectly happy either way on the rest of the three.
So Casey will take my, my two assignments and I will stay with Economic Development Representative because that's the Chairman. And then I will take all Bill Paul's, all Bill Paul's assignments. And then I think we need to think about next year, being one of the, so flip it around a little bit more, Eric.
Have we not gotten, I haven't seen on the chart, we've got some new boards, I believe, that haven't been assigned yet that we were talking about. Senior Village, didn't, we were going to appoint someone to represent us on their board and also a Safety Committee.
Yes, that's true, Eric, so. Anybody want, anybody interested in serving on either one of those committees?
I'll be on the Safety Committee if.
I'll be on Senior Village.
And the Senior Village, it's there on board. And there was two discussions of us forming an advisory board. But Peggy pointed out there's a board there. So I think County Commissioner, hearing this, is a, I think, thanks for being able to serve on that, Eric. So, anything else that we need to point today? Now, the Ambulance Advisory Board, has that been active or is that still?
They didn't meet in 2020 and I don't know whether that was partially pandemic, you know, why move, you know, have people come to a meeting or attend, or if it was strategically harder to do. I think that it was first formed for the, basically for the formation of when the county took over from Tex Inc. and got the new building. So I don't know whether we want to kind of reimagine what that looks like or if we want to definitely schedule a couple meetings a year. I think it's a good idea. I did hear on the City Council meeting that they were kind of wondering the same thing because since there was no meetings. So, and I haven't had a chance to visit with Corey about it, whether he thought it was of value. I do, I think that anytime you have a Commissioner and City Commissioner and, and other people in the, in the know, get together, only good can come of it. So I, I would like to see it continue, but I think we need to have maybe more structure and have set meetings.
Okay, we need to talk to Corey about that. So let me just recap. The Ambulance Advisory Board would be Bauer. The area agency on aging would be Knoll. The Chamber Board would be Jamie Madison. County Health would be Bauer. Sorry, Community Corrections would be Bauer. County Health would be Knoll. JJJA would be Knoll. Joint Communication would be Quinn. We don't have a Livwell of Atchison sign that. We haven't been on that board. Is anybody know anything about that?
Was that ever, I don't remember that ever being a committee assignment.
No, it hasn't been. Is Michelle on or? The N E C A P Regional Board, N E K Regional Board, is that you, Eric?
Yes, N E C A P and N E K, yes.
Project Concern would be Bauer. Safety Committee would be Knoll. Solid Waste Advisory Board would be Quinn. Economic Development would be Bauer. Livwell Atchison, that's, does anybody know anything why that's on there?
My guess, it was something that was added just last year. We might have talked about it. I don't remember the organizational meeting last year because it was not on the 2020 list.
They, they asked us, they came to us and asked us if we would have a Commissioner on the board and the Commissioner at the time didn't have any interest in.
Andrea is going to be on the meeting next week, so it's possibly something you can talk to her about next week when she gives you an update.
Okay, let's do that, okay?
Perfect.
And the last one, Jack, would be Senior Village. It's not listed, but then I'll do that one.
And Casey, it's either going to be forming a new committee or slash joining the committee they already have.
Yeah, after talking to Peggy, I think I'll just join what they already have going and just, don't, yeah, don't rock the boat. They have the pharmacists and medical directors and all the people that are in the know. So I'll just find out when their meetings are and then join them.
And again, hopefully these meetings happen on somewhat of a regular basis.
I'm sorry. On Project Concern, what did you have, who did you have? I thought you said me for.
I said Bauer.
Okay.
All right. Partially. Let me recap. Ambulance Advisory Board, Bauer. Area Agency on Aging, Knoll. Community, Chamber Board, Madison. Community Corrections, Bauer. County Health, Knoll. JJJA, Knoll. Joint Communications, Quinn. Senior Village, Quinn. N E K Cap Regional Board, Knoll. N E K E S, Knoll. Project Concern, Bauer. Safety Committee, Knoll. Solid Waste Advisory Board, Quinn. And Economic Development Representative, that's, I guess, for the city, is Bauer.
I still think you said Knoll on Project Concern.
I didn't, but if you want me to, I will.
Well, I mean, that's.
What happened, Eric, is that there's, there's Knoll, N E K, Knoll, N E K E S, Bauer, Project Concern, Safety Committee, Knoll. So there's so many Knolls in there. Okay, so I'm going to circle that board. Okay, do we need, Pat, do we need a vote on this? Or is we just, I don't remember voting in the past.
Yes, I think you have voted on the past and I have to admit, I'm, I'm thrown off just a tad on, on two of those. I don't know if, Michelle, do you have it?
I have something here.
Let me go through it, let me go through it slowly. Ambulance Advisory Board, Bauer. Area Agency on Aging, Knoll. Chamber Board, Jamie Madison. Community Correction Advisory Board, Jack Bauer. County Health, Eric Knoll. JJJA, Eric Knoll. Joint Communication.
No. No, that should be you, Chairman Bauer. J C A P, the Juvenile Board, was Commissioner Paul's. Because I believe that should be you.
Okay, that's why we went through it again. Joint Communications is Commissioner Quinn. Senior Village is. Fisher Quinn. N E K Cap Regional Board is Commissioner Knoll. N E K E S is Commissioner Knoll. Project Concern is Commissioner Bauer. Safety Committee, which is new, is Commissioner Knoll. Solid Waste Advisory Board is Commissioner Quinn. solid waste advisory board is Commissioner Quinn, economic development representative is Commissioner Bauer. All those, Pat, or?
That's, I, yes, I have it, thank you.
Okay, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve the committee board assignments for 2021. It's been moved by Commissioner Noel, seconded by Commissioner Quinn, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, passes three to zero. Okay, appointment for carrot trustees and alternate trustees. Currently, it's Jamie Madison is the trustee, the alternate trustee is Michelle Phillips.
Are they on, is there any, do they want to change or something?
They're on the discussion, so. That, Jamie, do you want to continue?
I'm fine with staying as trustee of carrot.
And Michelle, are you okay with these alternate? Michelle Phillips, are you going to be the alternate? Okay.
Not unmuting. Yes, I'd be great with that.
The chairman would entertain a motion to appoint Jamie Madison as carrot trustee and Michelle Phillips as the alternate. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Noel, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, passes three to zero. Okay, renew memorial hall trustee for Larry Service, term expires December. And I, I don't know if surveys or service, I'm sorry, I think it's service. Term to expire December 2020. Any discussion?
Could you explain that to me just a little bit, as far as, I know the county owns Memorial Hall, but Larry Service is employed by the county or just appointed as a county resident, or just a little bit of an explanation as far as what we're voting on?
Pat, could you explain that?
Yes, but by statute, the Atchison County was authorized to build a soldiers and sailors memorial, and they did that in the form of Memorial Hall. That Memorial Hall is to be governed by three trustees, and I'd have to look at the statute, but I think two of them are required to be service members, and perhaps it's service members who fought in a war. I can't, I don't recall precisely, but by statute, there is a board of three persons for to run Memorial Hall, and those have been on three-year, three-year terms, three individuals that are on there, and his term is up. Leonard Budenbaum is also on there, and the give me a minute. The other trustee is Terry McKinney, and his, his term, I think, will be Leonard Budenbaum's term will be up this year, and then Terry McKinney was just appointed last year.
Okay, and Larry should interest to want to do it again?
Yes, yes, we've, I've talked with Leonard about that and communicated with him, and he, he talked to Larry, and the trustees recommended him.
Just as a point, since it's, we're discussing it, should we have done this regal in December before it expired?
I, I don't know that it makes that much difference. You certainly could. Let me, let me get the statute, the exact phrasing of it.
It needs to be the situation where you don't have a trustee.
Well, has that only been for 11 days, I mean, does it go till the very last day of December?
Well, there's the, there's all the craziness in our world, so I just.
Well, I, I think we've just kind of been talking about it in shorthand, I've always thought that that it went, it probably started with the organizational meeting, and instead of saying it ends at the organizational meeting, just have used the prior year as.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to renew memorial hall trustee Larry Service.
It's been moved by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Noel, any additional question? All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, passes three to zero. Larry, you're in again. Okay, Jamie, you want to go over the approved holidays for 2021?
Can I actually pull it up, I didn't have it ready. Most of them, the way they fall this year, I didn't send out a survey to the employees like we normally do, because the way the holidays fall this year, they're pretty standard, so I believe there's 10 of them.
So this is because Christmas fell on, it's falling on Saturday, it's also New Year's.
Yes. The New Year's Day and Christmas Day will fall on a Saturday. So we're looking at Martin Luther King Junior Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, the fourth is on a Sunday, so we're looking at Monday, July 5th, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day and the day after, and then Christmas Day falls on a Saturday, so we're looking at Christmas Eve, Friday, December 24th, and then New Year's Day also falls on a Saturday, so that we're looking at Friday, December 31st.
So Jamie, did these coincide with the state of Kansas?
I have not looked.
Yeah, I just was wondering about the July 5th versus July 3rd.
I believe so, Michelle actually had put this list together, and I believe she checked against those.
Okay. So the chairman would entertain a motion to approve the 2021 proposed holidays as presented?
Also move.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, passes three to zero.
Martin Luther King Day will come after the meeting next year, but still, it's, you know, it's just a week later. I don't know if you want to start including any January holidays in your year before. I mean, we've got New Year's Day, of course, we're always going to, to deal with, but we're going, I assume we're going to be closed that day, and people would be wanting to make calendars, et cetera, ahead of time.
That actually is one question that comes up to me every year, is whether that's gonna be one of our days, since it's just next week. It always falls that way, and I tell them I always have to wait till the commission meeting to get an answer, so I agree with Pat, it would be beneficial to go ahead and do that where it falls every year.
So what date would it fall next in 2022?
Be Monday, January 17, 2022.
So the chair would entertain a motion, can the commission, well, we're not changing commissions, so chair would entertain a motion to approve the Martin Luther King holiday for January 22, from, to January, did you say 14th?
17.
More 17, 2022, if I have a motion?
Also move.
Seconded by Commissioner Noel, or by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Noel, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, Jamie, no questions in the future, okay. Approved Columbus Day employee training on Monday, October 11. Jamie, you might give Commissioner Quinn a little update of what exactly that is and how it works. And this is, this is a little taken up, a holiday for the state, so.
Correct, the county, Atchison County, to my knowledge, has never used Columbus Day as a close to the public holiday. However, a lot of individuals and citizens believe that we do, we are closed because of other businesses and the banks being closed, so there's a lot less traffic that day. So a lot of other counties, I realized through my HR listserv, they actually go ahead and use as an employee training day. So we would go ahead and close to the public and then use that for training. In the past, we've done active shooter training, CPR, first aid. We usually try to have like a carrot supervisor, which carrot is our workers' compensation supervisor training. We've had Microsoft, Excel, Outlook, several different ones. This year, we did, obviously, couldn't get together as normal, but we still made it work. But that's one thing I continue to like to do is Employee Training and Appreciation Day.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve Columbus Day employee training on October 11, 2021.
So moved.
By Commissioner Noel, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. You guys are faster than the other guys were. All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, passes three to zero, okay. Approve the work, approve the work session official meeting dates and times for 2021. So, I guess these questions are there, what day of the work, do we want to conduct work session? I think we took a, Jamie did a, a survey monkey among department heads elected officials, and it was almost unanimous, either Tuesday or it doesn't matter, but there was nobody that named it another day. And then we started our, the workshops at 10 o'clock, and have gone till noon or till business is finished. And our official meetings are at 1 o'clock, going until the business is finished. So, anybody want to change any of that, or?
I would like to propose a change to that. I, I would like to see the work sessions with employees stay the same as Tuesday, 10 a.m., because you've surveyed them and they've made their voice heard that that's what they'd like to see. But the official meeting dates, I would like to see that moved to a Thursday, early evening, late afternoon, for folks that are working and would like to come before the commission to, to just take part or make their voice heard. Plus, that would allow us two days as commissioners to go from a work session to be out and talking to citizens if there's anything we need to gauge public input from any topics. I realize that this is good for the county and the residents, and it could pose a little extra time from the, from the staff, but I've kind of ran it by several of them, and hopefully, more than likely, we'll be able to do it. They can join in to listen, or if they have to come, we could maybe do a 4:30 where they, they do their part before they get off work, and then we handle the rest after 5:00, if there's any public input that wants to come before us. Thoughts?
What time, you're talking early evening, are you talking 4:00, or those people, are you gonna reach any more people, they're still working?
Well, so here's the deal, the, the public is fed after work or close to 5:00, but again, the staff here at the county, we need to be mindful of, so that's why I was thinking, you know, if we did a 4:30, that would give a half an hour before they get off work to come before us with anything they have, and then still be able to be here a little after 5:00 for anybody that would want to come. And more than likely, if you have a reason to come, or you see an agenda item you're interested in, you're gonna take the time to take off work a half hour early to be here. It just gives, Tuesday at 1:00 is hard for a lot of people being in the middle of, in middle of the day, so.
Casey, why Thursday?
I, I was just thinking, it gives us a couple days, anything pertinent, we need to get feedback on from the public. It gives us time to get out and kind of get that feedback a couple days in between.
I'd like to propose that we leave it the same, except we have a, either every two months or every quarter, a evening session to allow people to come in. And I'd also like to propose that we have a meeting set with our townships and with some of the other cities that people can participate in, but I'm not sure that I'm in favor that Tuesday, Thursday scenario. I've never heard anybody, nobody's ever said to me, I'd like to, to, to have the meetings at a different time. That doesn't mean they're not saying it, I've never, anybody talked to me about.
Yeah, no, they're definitely saying it, and I do, I love that idea as far as the townships and the other cities, I think that's huge, too. One thing I'd like to point out is doing a one-off, like once a month, it's hard for people to remember that date and schedule, like a routine's usually better to get into as far as like, oh, they know county commission Thursday, 4:30, and they can always just, just know that. And that's just from historically serving on other boards, where we've tried to encompass as many people pop, you know, possible, but when you choose one date, it kind of falls under the radar versus a set schedule.
Of course, we publish any kind of media we're gonna have, in the newspaper, social media. Eric, your thoughts?
I'm trying to wrap my head around it a little bit. I think, I haven't heard anything like that from employees as far as them, I can't imagine that that would be too popular among employees having to stay over or push it that late. I'm not opposed to the idea of it, I'm just kind of trying to wrap my head around what, how that would look and how that would actually play out. I really can't see people coming to or leaving work early to come to a meeting at that time, I guess that's where I'm having a hard time, if it's still with the majority of the worker, people that are employees of the county, not necessarily county employees, that's still in their work, normal work times, I don't see them leaving work to come to a meeting, I guess. That's, I'm not saying they won't, I just don't see it.
Well, and I just think our meetings will be longer than a half an hour to where, for the staff, they're not taking time out of their, they can come from the 4:30 to 5:00 segment if, if we need them to explain something better, and then be available after 5:00 for anyone that wants to come, that works for a living, or. I mean, and again, this is feedback that I've gotten from the county residents, so I'm just bringing it to you guys for discussion. I think that a lot of the concern is the workshop and then right into the, sorry, what, the organizational meeting. There's not a lot of time in between to, to discuss with the county any issues that, that should involve them, that do involve them. So I like the layout of giving us a couple days to kind of get out and about and hear from the public, but.
I guess I'd like to hear maybe, because the, your employees a lot of times need to be available for the length of the meeting, if there's any discussion to be held, a lot of times it involves our employees. So if, I don't think that they're gonna be able to just be on here for a half an hour and go home, the public come in and I think we're gonna be putting things off for a week then to get things answered the same way, I don't know if that's gonna really help.
Commissioner Noel, what would you like to say?
I do understand the the change, not necessarily having it all in one day, so if there was proposals done on the work session, that the vote wouldn't happen at. that it, the vote wouldn't happen at one oh five that same day. Um, may, maybe we just, Tuesday work session, Thursday, regular session and not necessarily, uh, go to four, but still do it at one o'clock. Or we could do it in the morning. Uh, we could have both of them in the Tuesday morning and Thursday morning.
I really think we need to look to accommodate the county residents in this one. I know especially this year with the Sparks grant. Um, there were a lot of people really frustrated. They had, they felt like they should have been at the meeting to voice their feedback and at one o'clock, only a couple of people were able to jump onto that. Um, and I just, I think it's, I think it's a concern of several people that we should kind of think, think it through before we, we set it in stone and and definitely give people an opportunity outside of the, the working day to, to come before us.
Pat, is this something that could be changed? Like we continue as is, have a discussion and change our meeting times later in the, in the year? Does this have to, uh, keep it on for the full year?
Oh, you, you, you may change it by adoption of a resolution. I think maybe we could continue, especially, I would propose to stay at ten o'clock for work sessions and one o'clock. One o'clock for, um, the open session. But you might want to consider anything on the workshop. Uh, unless it's an emergency that has to be handled to not be taken up until the following week. We could promote what's going to be on the agenda in the following week and, uh, then we could try a few, once a month, trying some four thirty meetings to, uh, this is a big change. So try some four thirty meetings and see what kind of interest in or interest all people attending within.
I think whatever we decide, it should be consistent, not a once a month thing. Like it, it should just be.
Well, I would make a motion that we leave the workshop at ten o'clock, the general meeting at one o'clock on the, on Tuesday. Is there, is, anybody want to second that?
I'll second that, but to be revisited probably.
I would agree with that. We can revisit this. I'd like to go have more information. I'd love for people to reach out to commissioners and, uh, obviously some people have reached out to, to Commissioner Quinn. Uh, I've never had anybody ever reach out to me. Eric, I don't think he's ever reached out to me in this regard. But so I would, I would, I would call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
Aye.
It passes to the one. Um, okay. Date, date and time of the organization meeting in twenty two, twenty twenty two. This would actually fall on Monday, January tenth, at twenty twenty two, started getting, uh, any discussion in regard to that? The chair would entertain a motion to approve the organization meeting in January tenth, twenty twenty two, at twelve noon. I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
The move by Commissioner Knoll, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Um, to name, to name, uh, banks as eligible depository, um, the chair would entertain a motion to approve Exchange National Bank Trust, UMB and the Bank of Atchison and the Bank of Blue Valley. For our eligible depositors.
May I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Um, I was just curious why we chose Bank of Blue Valley? I, I didn't know. Is that something Connie recommends to us?
These are, these are the banks that are local. Um, we've got the right documentation of the Bank of Blue Valley. Uh, Michelle?
This is, this is a list of all of the eligible depositories in Atchison County. Um, next line item is actually what needs to be, um, voted upon, and that is per recommendation of the um, county treasurer that we use the Exchange Bank and Trust as the main depository.
Okay, so those are eligible, but then.
Correct, correct. So I do know we have ba, we have money in multiple banks. Um, but the main depository, which would be used for like our payroll and, and AP and such would be the main depository, which would be the Exchange Bank and Trust. For recommend, the county, um, county treasurer.
Thank you.
That letter.
Can anybody tell me where the Bank of the Blue Valley is located?
The Bank of Blue Valley was the old Valley State Bank.
By McDonald's.
Oh, so it is in Atchison. I didn't know that was its name. That, that was throwing up a flag to me. I was, my mind was going Kansas City. I'm like, why would we? But that, okay, so it's right there.
They just recently switched over. I don't remember, um, what it was right before there, but.
So the, so all the banks that Atchison are eligible, except you have a name, Wells Fargo. So the chair would entertain a motion to name the following banks as eligible depositors. Exchange Bank and Trust, UMB, Bank of Atchison and Blue, and the Bank of Blue Valley. Oh. I have a motion. All seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Now, by the recommendation of the county treasurer, I would make a motion, I would ask for a motion to name Exchange National Bank and Trust as the main depository for Atchison County.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Knoll, seconded by Commissioner Knoll. Did I say Commissioner Quinn? I'm sorry.
Said multiple times.
Sorry.
It's fine.
You, you don't even look like Commissioner Quinn.
Worth, worth the same time today.
Any, any, um, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Um, meal reimbursements.
Um, mileage rate?
Mileage first.
I jumped across mileage rate. Okay. The IRS fifty six cents per mile, state of Kansas fifty six cents a mile. I would, I would, I would entertain a motion to approve the county rate is the same as IRS in the state of Kansas.
You might say fifty eight. You, I think you said fifty six maybe.
I'm reading fifty six. Am I not reading this right?
Mine says fifty eight, sorry.
Mine says fifty six. Per, um, the email, the organizational email, has that changed? Since, did that get recopied from last year?
Uh, in twenty twenty, the mileage rate was fifty eight. Um, I went in and found the IRS mileage rate for twenty twenty one and it did drop. It was fifty eight and it dropped down to fifty six. And, um, I have the, um, state of Kansas. Um, employee travel expense reimbursement brochure, and it is for automobiles, private automobiles, it's fifty six cents per mile as well.
I'll change it on my sheet. Thank you.
And yes, well, it's, yes, of course, obviously, yes, has been low. Hopefully it stays that way. So the chair would entertain a motion for the fifty six cent a mile for Atchison County. It's been called, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Um, meal reimbursements. Um, as, oh, this is kind of a long thing, but this is what it reads. Meal reimbursements is stated fifteen dollars a meal, total of thirty eight dollars a day. Can use thirty dollars from two meals to make up for one. Receipts are required for each meal. The meals are included in, in the registration of meeting and cannot include those as per meal cost. Receipts may be included prior to payment. The county will not pay tips or alcohol beverages. Now, Michelle, I, I thought we wouldn't pay sales tax.
You do have, um, everybody that has a credit has a tax exemption card, but you do have some places who won't take that off, depending upon where you're at.
Yeah, that's been my experience. It's a, it takes someone to call the home office to deal with it.
Right. I've had him, I've had him do both. I've had some places that will be more than happy to take that off and you show them that card. So, um, but yeah, I think everybody's kind of been directed to go ahead and try that when they do go for me.
Yeah, it works sometimes and sometimes it doesn't, so.
Can you clarify, what does that mean? Can use thirty dollars from two meals to make up for one? I, I'm not grasping that.
What it means is if you eat, if you spend thirty dollars on two meals and don't eat the third, that's all the truth. Is that right, Michelle?
Some people have different eating habits and they prefer a larger meal at one meal and they don't eat as much the second meal. So if they want to get a bag of chips or something for the second meal, they buy that out of their pocket where they can get a larger meal to satisfy their diet, their dietary needs for the other meal. Um.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm confused because it's total of thirty eight dollars a day, but then you can only do two meals to add up to thirty. So.
Right, you would still have a three meal allowance, but if you chose to combine the two, like if you got done at mid afternoon or something of a day, you could have a, a heavier meal the mid afternoon, but you would still have probably a breakfast that day.
Okay. I just think it's worded kind of funny.
For a total of thirty eight dollars max per day.
So if I have dinner and I spend thirty dollars, just one meal, is that eligible?
With no, no, um, tips and, or no tips and no alcohol, thirty dollars.
But if you ate one meal a day and it was thirty seven dollars, it wouldn't count because you can only use, get thirty in one shot. That's what's throwing me.
Mm-hmm.
And just for clarification, the meal reimbursement, is that for the situations where when COVID's not happening and we're traveling to a training or an employee is, is doing that, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Be rare if it would happen in town. So it has happened before. Uh, it'd be rare. I don't know what those circumstances have been. It'd be rare. Uh, and if Wes is on, my card has disintegrated for its tax exempt. If I could get it another way. Do I need to sign it first or, and I'm sure Casey's going to do this later.
I'll make all three of you one.
Okay, that'd be great. And Casey needs a credit card and she doesn't already have one. So, I think, what?
Already ordered.
Okay, you know, I, I think I've used my credit card like twice in two years. So I don't even carry it with me. So I'll be kind of seeing what happens. So. Okay, um.
Make a motion, good.
Okay, so it's been approved, approved meal reimbursement, seconded by Commissioner Knoll.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, cell phone reimbursement. So, Casey, this has been where we give some reimbursement to people who have, should, need a phone for county business. So, uh, Jamie, you want to give us the, give us the situation where someone would or not have a cell phone?
We actually have a cell phone reimbursement policy for employees. And if they are using their cell phones when appropriate for county business, um, we can allow them, depending on what they are using it for and how often, we have two different rates. There's either thirty per month or sixty per month. Most department heads are at sixty per month. Um, most of everybody else falls at the thirty. Her few, I think, exceptions. And then we have them sign the policy and that is given per payroll.
So the chair would entertain a motion to set the cell phone reimbursement at voice calling only uh, for thirty dollars a month and voice Texas text and data is sixty dollars a month. Do I have a mo, do I have a motion?
Also move.
To move by Commissioner Knoll, I have a second.
A second.
Commissioner Quinn, um, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Um, percentage to be set for sales tax distribution between solid waste and joint communications. It currently at seventy seven percent and twenty three percent. Jamie, is this still appropriate?
It should still be accurate. And if we get going a little further in the year and after the audit, we may have to make an adjustment, but at this time I'm fine with those percentages the way they are.
The last time I looked, I thought solid waste, you have a product cash flow, so.
We may have to take a look at that then.
So do we approve this based upon further review or?
Yes, I would do that. Make sure it does get approved. And that way, when those distributions get ready to go out, the treasurer's office knows how to, knows how to split those up. They need those rates.
So the chair would entertain a motion to set the sales tax distribution between solid waste and joint communications. And seventy seven percent for joint communications and twenty three percent for solid waste. Do I have a motion?
Based on Jamie's recommendation, I'll make a motion. So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Knoll. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Resolution for waiving, uh, the general association, generally accepted accounting practices for the nineteen, for the twenty twenty one on. Everybody familiar with the generally accepted accounting principles? We are waiving those principles.
This is standard for what we've done every year, isn't it?
Well, yes, in most counties, including us, use cash value accounting. Certain other counties might use a accrual accounting, but most counties in that Kansas use a cash counting. I know the city of Atchison uses a accrual count. So they would be subject to the generally accepted accounting practices. Doesn't mean that the cash value isn't still accepted and, and used in a lot. So. The, the chair would entertain a resolution for waiving the GAAP for the twenty twenty one on.
So move.
The move by Commissioner Knoll, seconded by, I'll second up a commission for, uh, for discussion purposes. Okay, any discussion?
Sorry, I just don't feel like I know enough about that to, to be a voting. I, I take recommendations from who, from Jamie on that if, but I just, I don't know enough yet to, to be confident in a vote one way or another. Sorry.
Great. When we have our first meeting with the auditors and they will be here, I will make sure to get them, um, set up with you. And it would be great for you to have a conversation with them anyway, and they can kind of run through that too. Perfect. Thank you.
So, any other discussion?
Pat, did you have something to add?
Well, um, in Kansas, by statute, the audit, uh, the audit report has to be done on a cash basis accounting system because we had a Kansas cash basis law. And, uh, so there's no, there's nothing that would hinder, um, the county from doing both. But you definitely. the county from doing both, but you definitely are going to have to do the cash basis accounting method for purposes of the audit.
Perfect, thank you.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for waiving G A P. Okay, you guys are gonna be all over the field today. All, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Passes through zero. Okay, seventeen, Set County Government Day. So, it's County Government Day has been when we've had a seminar with generally high school students from from the local high schools, Atchison High, Effingham, and Morehill. We don't, didn't have it last year because of obviously the COVID. And I think it's a great exercise to hear from elected officials and learn how government works. The question I would have, do we have a time that we dare set a, set a date for this? Knowing, not knowing where the light is at the end of the tunnel at this point. Any thoughts?
Can we set a date later? Are we, are we talking about for this school year or even into the fall for next school year?
Well, I think I would suggest fall.
Okay, so we can do either. Yeah, I would say if we could set a date in the fall, but that way it's already on the calendar and we don't lose track of not doing it in the future, but have that, and then we can always change it if we're still facing COVID issues, right?
Right. I think that we need, then we'd have to really, as far as dates are concerned, we'd almost have to know the school calendar, because I think we usually work with them. I don't know if they actually have political science, but they have governors, subjects, high school. We'd almost have to work with those teachers to coordinate, so.
Okay.
I think it'd be difficult to set a date at this point. What does everybody think?
I think it'd be extremely hard to, to set a date without input from the schools to begin with on a, on a regular year. And with this COVID thing, I, I wouldn't be, I think it'd be good to maybe talk about it and discuss and maybe have a window. So, Michelle would be, have a basis to, to open discussion with the school districts and say, we would like to do it, you know, September or, you know, something like that, but I don't think we're gonna be able to pick a date here.
Yeah, the school calendar is only for this year so far, so I could make a note and reach out to some of the government teachers and get some feedback for us to make that later on.
Yeah. And, you know, there's, there's a national pizza day and there's a national, national, every kind of day. There must be a national government for education. It'd be interesting to know when that is, and it might fit in. And maybe if we can't go via in-person, maybe we need to figure to get creative, figure out a way to do it via social media of some, some sort, house and speakers and kind of see what that, it should be fun for the kids to come up here. I think we served them lunch in the past. So, it's, I don't want to put it off. Okay, twenty twenty-two budget calendar. I have it in front of me. It basically says the Board of Accounting Commissioners will review budget expectation from elected officials and department heads on March second. And then there's a series of dates that we need to make to do the budget. And one of the things I think worked really well last year is we kind of assigned department has elected officials to certain dates because it tend, they tend to.
Real quick, we skipped number eighteen. I didn't want to say it.
Number eighteen is scratched off on my sheet.
See, it's not scratched off on mine. I didn't speak up, but Michelle just sent us a chat that we skipped.
There's a line through it, so I skipped over. Let's, let's go into the budget calendar, then we'll come back to it. Did you have a line through yours, Eric?
Yes.
Okay. So, you're getting the latest and greatest, Commissioner Quinn. Okay, so, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget calendar. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
The move by Commissioner Knoll, seconded by Commissioner Quinn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Setting nine-one-one addressing permit fee for one and four twenty twenty-one. And I'm a little confused on what that is. Wes, you want to explain that? Or Roger, both of you?
If Wes wants to go ahead, I'll let him do it, but what happened is about two years ago, the county commission decided that they wanted to address all addresses in the county with nine-one-one addresses so that emergency personnel would be able to quickly identify those properties. Now, let me go back one step further and just give you a little background information. In about two thousand thirteen or fourteen, my name ended up on a signature somewhere that said I was the FEMA management guy for Atchison County. And so, I attended some training. They came back and said, the county commission who approved the original flood plane, flood plane and FEMA documents had agreed to do permits for new construction or development within any area of Atchison County so that they could verify whether or not anyone were developing within one of those flood planes. Because commissions have agreed to restrict development in the flood plain. They told me that if we didn't do that, that they would be coming after Atchison County for that. So, I spoke with the commission at that time. We set up and developed a development permit that asks about five questions. One of the questions is, do you need a, a new address? One of the questions is, do you need a solid waste disposal system? Because K D H E requires that we permit those and we utilize Northeast Kansas educational, or Northeast Kansas Environmental Services to do that for us. And the other three questions deal with, are you building in the flood plain? And if so, are you complying with the rules that FEMA puts out in the Department of Agriculture? We did this. It's a very simple one-page. I know Casey has submitted for those permits and received them several times, so she's been aware, aware of what they do also, but we never have charged a fee for them at all. And then, a couple of years ago, when we started in this addressing system, the commission actually said that they wanted to charge a fee that was gonna cover at least the cost of those associated addresses so that when somebody applies for a new permit that has a new address, that they would have to pay a fee to get that new address put into the property. That was supposed to take effect about a year ago, but there were enough things going on on the calendar that it got pushed back for a year. So, I'm assuming, Pat texted me with this, and I'm assuming that what we're doing is we're bringing it back up to you again this year because nothing was done last year. And I hope that is, is a fair reiteration of the information, Wes.
So, the plan was this year to start charging, I can't remember exactly, twenty-five to fifty dollars per each application because that would help pay for the address sign in the post that we would post in front of the new address, or in front of the new residence that was being built. With COVID, we held off on our nine-one-one addressing installation in two thousand twenty, which I plan to bring up in two thousand twenty-one here very soon to get all the address signs that we've already purchased out into, into community. But this cost would help pay for the, the new address, so it would be assigned at each, each of the new facilities. Plus, it would help reimburse the G I S for all the work they do to, to complete that application each time everyone, anyone applies for a new address, because it takes Roger hours of work to, to complete those applications that those resubmitted to the, to the residents of our county.
What are those fees?
Right now, there, there is zero fee. It's nothing.
No, I mean, what's the proposed fees?
The discussion last year was somewhere between twenty-five and fifty. The sign and the signpost is twenty-five dollars. So, then another twenty-five, rest of the expenses was what, what was proposed last year. But you can set it whatever, whatever you feel is justified.
Okay, I thought there was a number actually assigned last, last year, not, not a range.
No, I think, I think we decided to wait until this year, Eric. I think our time is now upon us. I think that twenty-five for the signpost, and then there's also installation of the post. We'd still be responsible for installing it. Twenty-five dollars for the fee of handling the paper. I think fifty dollars is probably well, fair. Anybody else's thoughts?
So, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around, because I have two different things that I'm thinking of. Like, as a county resident, I got an application where I could opt into the nine-one-one, the nine-one-one addressing permit, pay a fee and say, yes, please do it, but I haven't gotten my numbers on the mailbox yet. So, that's because they were pushed off because of COVID, correct? So, so even though, so all the people that opted in, filled out their form, paid their money, they're still gonna, no, okay.
The county footed the bill for the original purchase.
Okay, but was there an option to give? So, when we signed up for that, we should have had a checkmark saying, willing to pay for the nine-one-one, or we just opted in to help EMS in general, like, hey, find me.
It, it was you opt into getting it on your mailbox, or if you didn't want it on your mailbox, we would set a post at the end of your driveway. There was no money associated with it because the county footed the bill.
Okay.
Entire project. So, and yes, they should have been installed by now, but with the way two thousand nineteen ended for the county and then COVID started, it's gotten pushed back till two thousand twenty-one to get done. But not to stay on top of this, so any new address that is, that is created from two thousand twenty-one forward, we need to stay on top of that to make sure all of our houses end up getting addressed, otherwise we're back in the same situation we are now with houses that don't have addresses. So, this is, to make sure that we continue forward. There are a few addresses in two thousand twenty that were created that the county will foot the bill for those because we, the commission had not yet set that we would be charging for the new addresses. So, I think there's five or six. Roger, is that right? Addresses that the county will foot the bill for, for signs that we'll have to create that were established new in two thousand twenty.
There were, I don't know the exact number, but there were a number of addresses which were assigned during two thousand and twenty.
I think that fifty is a little high. I'd like to see maybe twenty-five or thirty dollars.
Let me, let me summarize. The nine-one-one signing that each person is gonna get is absolutely free to current addresses of the county of Atchison. Anybody who loses their sign and has to have it replaced would be subject to a fee that we would set for the, for the sign. The, then there's another scenario, if you have paperwork for the flood plain. So, there are these two different scenarios, twenty-five dollars for the sign or post, and twenty-five dollars for the flood plain permit or address. Did I make it more confusing by summarizing it?
No, that's what I kind of wanted to understand too, because when you start talking about fees to county residents to build, to do things on their property, they're just gonna ask because their mind's gonna go to zoning. You're dinging me for a fee for, for something, but this is just all nine-one-one permit fees have been absorbed by the county. They're getting their signs that they opted in for. This is all new construction, just like you're giving your Northeast Kansas environmental permit for a septic. Like, it's a new address. We ensure you're on the nine-one-one system moving forward like that, correct?
That's what I am understanding is, we currently charge no one anything. The signages are the, the development permit is being done strictly because the commission agreed with Kansas Department of Agriculture that they would do that, and then they didn't do it for a period of like seven or eight years, and they were preparing to come after us.
Okay.
And they could have come after us and fined us, and instead I encourage the commission, do a simple permit, don't charge a fee for it, and let's get it started. It's been relatively successful because we issue between sixty-five and a hundred permits every year.
Okay. So, Roger, do you think twenty-five dollars is? What would the number be? Because I, I haven't looked at the, what the installation costs are. You, I mean, you guys suggest, and I don't think we should vote on it today, but it's something we could go out and hear, you know, kind of let them know, we're gonna vote on this, and, I mean, I'm for it as far as it's a new establishing thing, but I, I want to talk to, you know.
Sign installation, yeah, sign installation is whatever it's gonna cost, because I'm not putting those in myself. And some department, whether it's Wes or Roden Bridge, they're gonna have to buy the signs and put those in, and you're gonna have to absorb whatever you don't charge them for. As far as permitting goes, our permit costs, if you want to charge a permit fee, they can stay fairly low because what we don't do is we don't go inspect those sites. We don't go out and make sure that we have no building codes, we have no zoning codes, and so we're not out there trying to find out if people have built in the right location, or if they're even putting up what they said they put up. Now, what will occur is there are people who will look at those things, and I will probably get easily ten inquiries a year from Northeast Kansas Environmental asking me if I am aware that someone is installing a new mobile home in the county. And do we know whether or not they have sewage for it, or are they just running it into the creek? And so, it is beneficial from that standpoint when I can look at it and say, yeah, the person's come in here and gotten a permit, and they should be getting in touch with you, or the other side of the answer is, no, please go see if you can get them in compliance. Okay, so we, but as, as far as I am concerned, I don't drive out there and look at all those. What we will do is we will see what it is that they applied for, and then we will send someone from the appraisal staff out to see if that's actually what went in, and then that is attributed to their taxes for the coming years as anything would be.
I guess from what I'm hearing, I think that it would be easier to charge for something that's physically going in like the sign and having it installed, but the service of having just a, an address established, I think is kind of a county service. It's kind of like the treasurer, you know, doing their normal duty. So, I don't know if I would really want to maybe make that a, a fee, but anything that's a physical, we're, we're having a that service of actually having to provide the sign and install it, I definitely am for a fee for that. Whatever that break-even fee would be.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with Eric. I mean, there's no charge to county residents unless you're new construction, and you fill out a permit and you, and we're just recovering our costs, correct, Wes? Of a laborer to go out, put it up, and, right?
The twenty-five wouldn't cover labor. It's gonna cost the pole, the sign, and whatever bolts it takes to label the county. If you want to include labor, you'd have to do an estimated expense, and it would be more than the twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
I, as the chair, I would entertain a motion to the nine-one-one addressing, they, the new address requires a sign, and the sign fee for new addresses would be twenty-five dollars. Is that what we're all saying?
I think Wes just said that that wouldn't cover it.
I mean, that'll, that'll cover your message or your sign in your post. That won't cover your labor, but do you want it to cover your labor?
Yeah, but the labor is, I, I read, the labor seems to be a number you can't put your fingers in. I mean, the sign of the, of the post I could put my fingers on is twenty-five dollars. It, so somebody has to go out of the way to do another job and stop a pound of that sign. I mean, it's, it's a nice county service. I just, then pay for the sign. What?
Which department installs those?
Roden Bridge was the discussed department. I'm not volunteering to go put up signs.
Yeah, I think it's, it's.
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to put something else on them at this moment either. I, I think we should, we, we need more information, I think, and to discuss this further, I think.
I think we have all the information we need to make a decision. You can always change it. This is the year we, organization.
I guess I seen Jeff pop off, pop on here. I'd like to hear what he has to say about this.
We just have so much ample time that, you know, we, we would love to be able to do this service. Being very facetious with that statement. Yeah, I mean, we're looking at probably a couple hours with two labor personnel per sign. I'm, I'm just guesstimating here, wild swag guess here.
So we're talking about five signs a year that you would put up?
All right, yeah, that's manageable. I mean, just go ahead and hit me just in the gutter again. I mean, that's fine.
You're welcome.
No, I, I think that's manageable. And I, I don't, I don't foresee an issue being too impactful on our existing budget with that. So that's something I think we can manage.
So you said two labors for an hour? Is that what you said or what?
I'm just, that's just a wild guess. I mean, we currently with the square posts that we have, we don't have a very good tool to drive those in. So it's basically a sledgehammer and a plate knocking those, those frangible bases into the ground. So I, I would like to have the proper tools to, to be able to do it more effectively and efficiently, but currently we don't. So I'm, I'm just throwing an hour out there just because if we have to go clear to the west end of the county, then it's gonna take at least a half hour to drive, you know, twenty minutes, whatever, to drive out there. Fifteen, twenty minutes to drive in the post and, and put it in and pin it and then drive back. So I'm, I'm saying an hour roughly with two people. So that's, you know, forty-five dollars, fifty dollars each, each sign. Just, that's just rough, completely rough ballpark guess.
And the sign's twenty-five, correct? Okay, so is it out of line to do a seventy-five dollar permit fee for new construction? But with it being installed within thirty days of their permit being paid? Because that's another thing, if someone's paying a permit fee, they want, you know, they want to make sure Roden Bridge isn't too busy to get out there, like to have some type of a timeframe or?
I wouldn't say thirty days because it depends on the sign company that we order from, how fast I'll be able to make them.
Okay.
Yeah, there is like typically what recently what we've had is a four to six week lead time on sign purpose.
Is that a motion? Commissioner Quinn, is that a motion?
To me, it makes sense, starting fresh, it's not causing, it's not costing the county anything. Because they've already requested theirs for free of charge, but for new construction and it's gonna be listed on our website. It's gonna be conveyed to the public that we're just recouping our costs of, of this labor and the sign together, seven, even seventy dollars, I mean, the post, I mean, seventy-five, I was just thinking throw, you know, throw the post in there too. But seventy-five dollars for a new application permit for a nine-one-one. But there has to be a timeline for installation, so it doesn't fall by the wayside when they pay the permit. Whatever that may be.
Say that when they install, by the time they install their mailbox, it should be a solid nine-one-one. So when they, when they install their mailbox, they can let us know it's installed within thirty days.
I think that sounds good. Do you guys all agree? I mean, the guys that are actually doing it, Justin?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Roger?
Yeah, essentially what you're saying is only new addresses will require a fee. Everything else will still continue to be at no cost.
This will be like five people a year. I mean, we're not talking about.
Right, and it'll, and all the new construction that's already started won't like anybody new. And we're gonna publish that on our website, right? So that people have access to what their fee might be and the reasoning behind it.
Again, I, it would be one of those things that, that we would probably add to the development permit that would say that if you're requesting a new nine-one-one address that it would require that additional sign installation fee. It's not gonna be hard for us to put that on the website as a tab.
So Commissioner Quinn, do you want to make a motion?
So based on the information that we just gathered from all the department heads, I would make a motion for setting a brand new construction nine-one-one addressing permit fee to cover our labor and sign costs of seventy-five dollars with a timeline listed of thirty days after mailbox is up for installation.
Maybe, do I have a second?
It seems awfully high to me.
Okay, I'm gonna second it for discussion purposes. Okay, any further discussion?
And I, it to me, just because I know what it entails when you go out and start digging in the ground, like it doesn't seem that expensive to me. But because you could encounter rock and be out there five hours, but, I mean, I don't know. I haven't seen the posts either, so those are things I, I want to see the developmental permit and see what actual post is going in so that we. But yeah, for discussion purposes. I think we're on the right.
I guess my thinking is, first of all, if you're gonna get a permit and address, whether you're building a house, you can't hardly build a, you can buy one of those sheds up at the shed places for ten thousand dollars. You're gonna put it in a road, I don't watch gravel it takes to do a road. I'm saying seventy-five dollars, this is a deal for it.
Yeah, but it's just, it's just something that you have to apply for and pay a fee, which people in the county don't like to do. Like it's, and, and so that's why I'm just trying to think, like, we have to just justify the reasoning behind it and explain. And covering our costs is different from just charging a fee to, to, to gain income, I guess. But can we just, discussion purposes and revisit this maybe next week after we do some more?
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
So I, I, I guess to, to add some layer of justification to all this is we're talking about a couple people and a truck to drive to the location. Insert the, the base and pin the post and mount the sign. Not only that, but we've got time invested with either myself or Joe or the actual person in charge of the crew to call in locates two days in advance. So, I mean, just that alone detracts from everything else that we're trying to do here. So, and, and not, I don't mean to say that negatively, like detracting from what we're trying to do. But it's, it's part of what we should be doing, but at the same time, it's, it's hours and time and commitment. And just trying to get this done, even if, even if it's only five times a year. It, it's still that, that added time and like to Jack's point. If, if you're putting in a new house and you're gonna spend, whether it's a hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, whatever it is, seventy-five dollars is a, is a drop in the bucket. In my mind, anyway, me personally, if I'm building a new house, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm gonna be willing to spend seventy-five dollars to put up a new sign.
I agree to that, as long as they know on the front end and it's available and it's part of the developmental permit, so it's not a, absolutely.
Well, now, part of this, and let me just ask the question, part of this is because we wanted uniform signs throughout the county so that emergency personnel knew what they were looking for. If you just made the signs available and had the people put them in, you would probably not end up with them where you want them. And, and I will tell you, within the city of Atchison, and I mention this because we don't do any permits within the city of Atchison, but we do everywhere except within the city of Atchison. We issue new addresses and, you know, where we do, we run into that situation over and over that we're trying to be uniform in everything that we do. Addressing systems have changed a lot in the last eight years.
Do you want me to call for a vote? Seems like we're making a three hundred and seventy-five dollar decision. We've got five permits, so. Okay, the chair would call for a vote to the Commissioner Quinn's motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Post.
I didn't get your vote.
I'm not opposed to my own motion, what?
Okay, so you say aye, passes to, passes to no. Okay, this is, I gotta line to this one too. Atchison Senior Village Board Resolution for Authorizing Signature. And this, I assuming ASF means Atchison Senior Village. I think we just had confusion about that a couple weeks ago.
And, and.
What exactly does that mean?
Correct, Jack, that's basically a yearly form that the senior village needs signed. We were putting it on here, but since Haley just started, they started, since she just started, they went ahead and had that done. So we did that a couple weeks ago.
The thing is, the thing is, Michelle, I signed it and Eric seems to believe that he was the authorizing signature. Which I didn't even remember that being an issue, so.
I, I had no problem with that, that you doing it. I just wanted to make sure that it was done correctly. That somewhere that there is a form saying that it's supposed to be signed by me, it was signed by you and that that would create a problem, but I have no problem with you being the authorized person, so.
And I have a problem with anybody being the authorized person. My suggestion would be to make it the resolution for authorizing signature be the chairman. Whoever's chairman would change every year, but they, they didn't automatically be the authorized signer. Does that make sense? So there's no, because I just signed it because I thought I just signed as chairman. So, and I don't even remember talking about this one.
It happened, I don't know, it's been several years ago that, and I can't remember, maybe that's when Mr. Sheena got off the board that I think he was on there before me and they changed the signature to me. At the time I wasn't chairman, I'm not saying that is right or wrong, I'm just saying that's the way, the history of it. And that was the only reason that I brought it up was, you know, to have it done correctly. So however it's supposed to be, it's fine that you signed. I wasn't, you know, upset or anything. I just wanted to make sure that it was done that would pass. You know, the, any inspector or anything that came along for senior village.
So I would entertain a motion to approve this authorizing signature of the Atchison Senior Village, which might happen once every year or two years or whatever, to be always the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. I mean, I've talked, I've talked about moving this into the future because if Casey's chairman next year, I could hear the chairman next year, just an automatic thing.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I would move that the chairman is the authorizing signature for the Atchison Senior Village Board.
I'll make that motion.
I think, I think Mr. Henderson might have wanted to say something.
I, I was just noting that you had previously put one of the commissioners on the board for senior village. And I don't know if that's gonna be any simpler to have that person do it, but I, there's no, nothing legal about it, so.
So.
You had earlier in the, the meeting, I don't recall who it was.
It was B.
It was Casey.
Casey, okay. I didn't know if you wanted to, for consistency, have, have her do it as well.
I say, what I was trying to accomplish is have it always be the chairman. So as the chairman changes, the signature changes automatically. And if we said the committee person, then we could do the same thing. But I, I just, I think it's not very user friendly to have a, it'd be a confusion who that person might be. And, you know, I have to apologize because I signed the document and for Kayla like three weeks ago. And I, and Eric pointed out that nobody had signed the document. I said, no, I did. So I thought I was the signature. So I said, I didn't even know anything about it, but anyway, I think we solved it. So Eric, your motion is?
Uh, to make, to chairman, the chairman, the signature for a senior village, but I'm up to, it doesn't make me any difference, so.
I'll second his motion.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Noll, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion of joint meeting with cities in the county and setting a date. Well, I will tell you one thing about meeting with the cities. I think we've only generally met with the city of Atchison. Every time we have a meeting, we say, this was really good and we really learned a lot and we should do this more often. Well, the last time we had a meeting was in two thousand and nineteen. You know, the, the city was having trouble finding, even though I tried to set up a, a meeting with them, they were having a bit of trouble fitting the time in to do that, so. I think it's hard to set a date without talking to the, to the cities. Any thoughts?
I would like to see us schedule a meeting with them quarterly and we could communicate those dates ahead of time so they're preset on everyone's calendar. That way there's no surprises. I'd be happy to be the point person to kind of gain some feedback on this if, if you want to go that route. I just think it's important to have consistency.
You say quarterly or is that just with the city of Atchison or are you talking about the other?
No, I think, no, I think it's important to meet with all of cities in Atchison County. And, and definitely the city of Atch is in quarterly, but maybe, I mean, you guys have never met with the other cities. So maybe feel them out and see what they would like to do and what fits for them.
So I'm a hundred percent for that, Casey. The only thing is I'm not sure quarterly might be too frequent. Maybe initially quarterly, but at least semi-annually, more than, in more than once every two years. I think that's important, so. I have no problem with Casey being the point person. Do you have any problem there? Why don't you, why don't you report back as to what you find? And see if they want to be part of it or, but let's hear from the cities what they're thinking, okay?
Sounds good.
Of course, the one subject we always want to talk about is the sales tax. You know, we formed a committee that made recommendations for what we should do for the sales tax. I think Commissioner Noll entered that committee and they came up with, the committee of both city and county members made a recommendation and I don't think anyone ever became one of them. So they, that's all.
Yeah, I think there's several topics as far as how we interact with city, county that we could chat about in a quarterly meeting, but yeah, I'll reach out. Um, that we could chat about in a quarterly meeting, but yeah, I'll reach out to them and get feedback and then report back to you guys.
Okay.
That brings up a topic that I. We didn't discuss the sales tax committee on our assignments.
I thought the sales tax committee was a whole operation.
Uh, no, you are designated the sales tax committee person and we never had any meetings.
I guess I, I. I think that I was trying to discuss it with the city. But I, the committee made its recommendations, would there be another reason for them to meet, would they discover something new, or?
Well, there is no, no resolution, so. Are you saying that it's not worth trying to resolve?
No, I'm not saying that at all, but we already have a recommendation from both city appointees and county. County, uh. Elected officials or, or employees.
Yes, and it's lost in the weeds, but I mean, I. If we never have a meeting, we're never going to resolve it.
So I would be willing to, um, to take Commissioner Bauer's place on that and like reconnect and see if there's anything that needs done or where we could go from there. I know, because I think Sean Rizzo was on that committee, he's gone now, like, I don't know who's left on that committee, but maybe it would be worth. Um, at least just, hey, I'm new here, where are we at, should we have a meeting, or, or not?
Okay, I, I feel like Casey. Eric, you give it?
I'm fine with it.
You might want to get, maybe we could have, uh, the sales tax committee as a workshop item for the nineteenth. So maybe give a cha-chance for Eric to talk about what the resolutions were and bring up to date on those particular things. In a workshop environment, so Michelle, if you could put that on and Eric could kind of lead the discussion on that, because he's the most familiar. Uh, I have a lot of documents from there, but, uh. Kind of take it, see what happens, it's a long time discussion and it keeps going on and on and on. Casey, if you could solve it. You're going to be commissioner of the year.
Well, I know I can't solve it alone, but hopefully we can formulate some communication and. Figure out a resolution that works for everybody.
Terrific. Now. Discussion of township, again, we didn't have one last year. And I know that was a very effective meeting we had prior.
Justin had addressed this here not too long ago that he's starting to lay one out. Am I right? Justin?
You are correct, yeah, I did send an invite to all of the available email addresses that I had for the township board members. Um, I only received one response. As I see it and understand, I guess that, uh, there are many, uh. Board members that don't even have email or access to email. Um, whether it be a smartphone or a computer or whatever, uh, I don't have email contact addresses for those, so. Um, I'm almost resorting to calling each person individually and seeing if we can schedule something. Um, I don't envision that it's going to be something that we can just. Work around every single person's schedule, so I think, uh, where I'm at is just basically setting up a meeting, time and place. Um, at the, the blue, uh, city building in Effingham. That, uh, I, I understand has, uh, ample. Space available to, so we can properly physical distance each other, um.
Can we set a date to start it?
Not yet, no, so if there's a, if there's a date and a time that works out good for you all, um, I'm thinking maybe five thirty, six o'clock in the, in the afternoon, evening. Um, on. Any given weekday.
Yeah, FYI, FYI, the last time we had the meeting, we met in a public building in Lancaster. And it seemed to be, I, I only bringing up that it might be more centrally located. Or, you know, and I don't have any townships in my district, so, uh, it, it's really up to Eric and Casey, what their thoughts on.
I really think that the. Beans that we've got distancing issues, I think that the blue building would give us the, the best option for safety. Uh, it's also passing around a little bit, um, but. Any, I mean, facility, I, is far, fine with me.
Does, does it have internet connections so people can join via social media if they chose to?
I would think so, uh, that would be the West question.
I don't know, I can talk to, uh, I can talk to Janet, uh, there in Effingham.
West says.
It does not have internet connection, but we can make it have internet connection fairly simple. And I suggested the blue building in Effingham because Lancaster City Building would not be big enough to socially distance.
Okay. Also, Michelle, you had a list of most of those township people with, uh, addresses and emails, uh, is. Have you made that available to Justin?
I believe I did, yeah.
I've got it, yep. Yeah, I've, just not everybody has one though listed.
Exactly, not everybody does have, we try to catch them whenever we can, but there are some people who just don't want us to have their email, so.
Justin, as far as my townships go, um, they have set meeting times once a month and I've joined them, um. And I would love for you to join with me in them, I don't know, they're all busy working individuals that I don't know. I don't want to set another meeting for them on their behalf, but I definitely think they'd be open to you and I going in to their meeting. Um, and, and voicing, you know, having collaboration there, because they all run individually, so like, one doesn't really, you know. I, I don't know, I think it'd be easier just to, for you and I to join their meeting that's already preset that they do every month. Um, but that's just my opinion, but I'll ask them.
Nope, that would be good, it just, uh, it would just be basically reconveying the same information at each meeting, would.
Eight, eight different townships, I believe, and.
So you're, so the township meeting you see as you just speaking and them listening then?
No, I, I wanted it to be an open, open conversation debate, you know, um. Concerns, questions, comments, whatever, it just. Kind of a, a semi informal meeting, I guess, um, I had some ideas for agenda, but. I'm definitely, uh, definitely open to, uh, uh, anybody's input.
I'm going to call Patrick.
Um, there are a couple of statutes, um. There is, uh, under KSA eighty dash three oh four, that. Each of the account, the township trustees are to, uh. I should back up, under KSA sixty-eight five twenty-four, they are to submit a, uh. An accounting to the county clerk by the end of January each year, and then under KSA eighty dash three oh four. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners is to review those audit reports, uh, and they're to do it at the. Their regular meeting, their next regular meeting after, uh, their due end. Uh, we've never really done that in the past and, and talking with Michelle, I think she'll tell you that there's been some, uh. Hard, uh, it's, it's been like pulling teeth to get those reports, uh, and certainly. Having them by the end of January has not been a common occurrence, but if we did set an annual meeting and set it in February. It could be for that purpose in the first year, you may not have much to do, but in the, you know, in future years, it may help. Getting those reports done that are required by statute. And I, I also would say mostly for Casey's, uh, edification. That you don't have any control over the board, over the township boards, and there's no penalty mentioned if they don't. Uh, if they don't submit them in that timely manner. So you can't, you don't, you don't have any way to punish them or, or anything like that, but, uh, it's still a statutory duty that they have.
Okay, while we're on townships, I know that one in my district, um, they're going to have a vacancy, um, so they'll come in. In front of us here soon as well, correct?
Yeah, by, by statute, vacancies on township boards I, are set by, are filled by the county commission, I'm. I'll check that for sure, but I'm pretty sure that's the case.
Okay.
Pat, I think it would be a good topic for any township meeting, especially a group meeting. To kind of go over the basics of, uh, coma and cora violations or, or requirements. Um, I think that that's a place where minutes are. Kind of neglected, um, I think that that is something that would be a good topic to touch on and it might. Be something that all of them, uh, even if they know it and are doing it, it's, it never hurts to brush up on it.
Do you have a date in February, Justin, that works for you if we try to invite them to an annual meeting?
Okay, sorry, uh, I was just talking to myself apparently there on mute. Um, yeah, any day is as good as the next in February, so whenever, sorry, I forgot that I was on mute there.
Well, you know, you don't need me to throw in Wi-Fi, since I'm going to tell you, the last time we had that meeting. We went over some of the things that Eric mentioned. Uh. How, I remember a lot of things, I think it was a heck of a meeting. And I think it's, I think it's important we get together and talk about it, we had an open session and there were some questions were asked, so those were quite pointed. But mainly, mainly it was a pretty good meeting and we actually helped us move forward a lot of ideas. And I don't think we could ever go wrong and have those communications.
Okay, well, I can check, um, I can check blue building and Lancaster city building availability and. Check with my townships and Eric can check with his and we can kind of bring back what we find out next week.
Was there a date proposed, I'm sorry, I was.
Not, not yet, but we need to find building availability if that's what we're doing. Um, and, and I could get both Effingham and Lancaster to find out. What their availability is and Wes, uh, we could probably bring this portal Wi-Fi, um. Thing that I'm using in here, maybe. Oh, you're muted.
Yeah, what's your?
I have a portable Wi-Fi, so that's not a big deal, it will be hit and miss in Lancaster and, and once again, that building is not going to be big enough to socially.
Okay, so just do Effingham, I'll check on that one.
Okay. Okay, discussion of the date for the annual tax. How about March of two thousand and twenty-one?
Whatever, whatever date we choose, I feel like it needs to become our annual date each year. Um, and just set it, that way the public knows, even if we have one, one year and twenty-two the next year and one the next year, what, however they fall when we get them ready. It's just a standard date that the public knows. That's the feedback I'm getting.
You want to give us an update of where we are in the current?
Well, there's, uh. This has been an unusual year, um, as you all know. And getting service of process is taking longer now, uh, it's getting quicker because we've gotten rid of most of the dregs off of the. Old tax sales that, where we were having given, but, you know, we have maybe four or five parcels where we're still looking for people that I think could be found. Um. If we set a rigid date, that means that if we don't have service on somebody by a specific date, that, uh. They're just kicked out of the sale for one reas, for that reason, and there, there's no problem with doing that. It, except for it means that a property might not be on the sale and also if somebody files a, uh. An answer and requests a hearing, um, even if there's not much of a basis, of a legal basis for it, that. That could also cause some delay, I still think, um, you know, March is probably when we're going to have this, uh, this sale, but, uh. Trying to set that for, for next year, after we're done, we'll have to do, send things out for abstracting. Um, file the case, yeah, that's prob, that's probably a reasonable time period to try to have it in, in March.
How, do we need one every year?
Um. I think people are getting used to having it. Every year or certainly every year and a half, we, you know, we, we had gone. Several, several years without having them, uh, in the past, so. That's not a good, a good thing either, uh. But. And they're also a little more manageable if we do them every year than. Than, uh, having them be bigger.
Has there been any thought of, uh, how we're going to, uh, do this with the COVID deal with, uh, social distancing, are we going to use Memorial Hall or?
Well, I've thought about it quite a bit, but, um. I, there hasn't been much discussion, uh, there were some, I posed the question on the county council's listserv and. There, there wasn't much of a response, uh, I don't know that, that very many places are having those sales right now, but. You know, I, I would like to, uh. To, to see the, a, uh, kind of a hybrid model where there will be an in-person sale, but there would also be. Uh, the ability for people to, uh, to, to bid over Zoom or, uh, some other way electronically. So, just my two cents.
That sounds good.
I think it sounds good, you're still thinking about St. Pat-Patrickish?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So should we set March as our annual tax out every year back?
Well.
I know you don't like those hard deadlines, but, and I realize that there's more. Difficulty in this than most people realize, because the property owner is protected by the law. So, you really have to go through a lot of. A lot of situations to, to, uh, protect the rights of the property owner, but do you ever get a hundred percent, Pat, you think, or, or always? Some fall off, so.
Well, you know, we have. At least a dozen landowners that are deceased. And of course, we're not going to get service of process on them. Um, nor are we going to open estates on each of them, which is something we could do, but. Um, it's not required by the, by statute, uh, so, a, and then there are some people that are just, that just no longer live here, so. Um, so no, I don't think we'll ever get to a hundred percent of people served. And people that leave if they don't. Deal with their real estate. Those are ones that end up on tax sales. But realize if you're setting it in March, that's fine, uh, except that next year. In March, that sale's going to have to be filed in, in, uh, July. Or something like that, to, to meet that deadline, so. You can't change it on me.
Yeah, that's why I think consistency for you as well as the public will be good, just.
Yeah, I think that's a hundred percent about, uh, me. You know, obviously if you're having gigantic problems serving people, you probably need to have a discussion about that. But if we just, we went forward to March, uh, I think we're. Or whatever month it might be, March is, we're going to March this year, March the next year. And it gradually will have less and less properties to deal with.
Yeah, and we do, we have less now than we had in prior years.
I remember that first tax sample, that was a doozy, I mean, you know, so.
Yeah. Yes, yes it was. And I, you know, I've learned a lot. And I, you know, I've learned a lot too since then, so hopefully I can look better at it.
The systems uh, have been more friendly to you, right?
Uh, yeah, a little bit.
Pat, I guess my question would be, if you had that annual sale. And you would say have ten properties that weren't ready for that March sale. How much of a problem is it to have like another one in the fall where you would pick up those properties? Is that, I see, I don't know. How much it is to the organization of actually having the sale, once those things come through and are approved for sale. So that's, that's where I was asking.
Well, we'd have to file a separate lawsuit to, to do that, I, I don't think there's any authority for us to have two. Two sales to bifurcate the list and have these properties sold in one sale and the other sold in the next sale.
So if those ten properties weren't ready for the sale, they would have to be.
But having a sale for five parcels.
He broke up on me.
Yeah, I'm picking up on me too, um. I, I, I couldn't hear what you said, but. Having a sale for. Ten parcels or, or fewer, I. I think would be more work than it's worth, especially if you're going to have one six months later anyway.
Okay, I was just asking, just kind of for a, to get my mind wrapped around it. Um, so them, ten parcels, if they're not ready for that annual sale, will have to be put off for a full year?
Would they go on the next sale, yes.
Okay.
So. I would make a motion um, to set the annual ta, tax sale date each year in March.
I'll second that.
Good discussion. Hearing the assembly right of all in favor, say aye. Aye, that's a three zero. Okay, that comes to the end of uh, your organizational meetings, um, is there any older unfinished business before the board? Uh, any county council updates?
I don't have anything else to add.
Yeah, public comment. Will send anybody out for public comment, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at two thirteen, yep.
I have one quick question, will we be, will we be meeting tomorrow at our approved work session time and official meeting, meeting time?
We're going to be, we're going to meet next on the nineteenth, Casey, cancel the meeting for tomorrow.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So much.
Looked by Commissioner Noll, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, I will see you on the nineteenth, have a good week.
Thank you.
Thank you.